Six thirty, why don't we start our council meeting? Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for those who have passed away in our community. Thank you. I gotta get Kathy here. I gotta get my list, too. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smol.
Here.
Mr. Schuster.
Present.
Dr. Rothschild.
Here.
Mr. McAndrew.
Present.
Mr. King.
Here. Please dispense with the reading in the minutes.
Third order, three A, overtime report for all departments as provided by city controller dated June twenty seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Three B, single tax office city funds distributed comparison report, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, year-to-date July sixth, two thousand twenty-three. Three C, correspondence received from the City Business Administration dated July eleventh, two thousand twenty-three regarding updated payroll preparation tax collections. Three D, correspondence received July eleventh, two thousand twenty-three from OECD regarding code enforcement report for city council. Three E, correspondence received July eleventh, two thousand twenty-three from OECD regarding cumulative permits, licenses, revenue report for January through June, two thousand twenty-three. Three F, correspondence received July eleventh, two thousand twenty-three from OECD regarding permits, licenses, revenue report for the month of June, two thousand twenty-three. Three G, single tax office second quarter city Scranton School District real estate tax update. Three H, controllers report for the month ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
Any comments on any third order items?
Yeah, I had a few comments, so same, same comments I had in our previous caucus. We're looking at three A, the overtime report. I did notice that refuse overtime was the highest since January. At that point in time, we had probably had some weather occurrences. I am looking forward to Rubicon and the city refuse coordinator coming in to give us a review of what's going on. Last week or the week before, I did ask a question about the smaller trash trucks. Didn't get an answer, but the response that we got was that we're advised that the administration is scheduled to speak about Rubicon and how the collection is going so far. So they're just, although we didn't get an answer about the smaller trash trucks and trips to the landfill, they will be in to explain that. So something just to point out there. I think Mr. King said three C, our payroll preparation tax was a little short this month, hoping to see that come up. And two things that I had for Mr. Boldenberg during caucus was we had three H in the controllers' report, red basket of NEPA, money for this organization come out of the community center line item. So just looking into the justification for why money came out of the community center line item for that organization. And then Rubicon was also on the, the controller's report for this month. And Controller Murray had asked several questions about the scope of the work, that we were looking to get some answers, and we'll hope to get those answers soon regarding that contract.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Any other comments on third order items?
I have a comment on the one code enforcement complaint report. And there's a number of properties on there, some of them that are from two thousand twenty-two, so I'm wondering if maybe we could clean up this list or figure out the, the current status of the properties. And one of them in particular, there's been complaints about since, and I'm wondering where, where it stands. That's the seven oh eight, seven ten Harrison Avenue, which is an empty, overgrown lot that's been a problem for years. And it sounds like it was with the magistrate, but I'm not sure what, what happened from there. So, Mr. Boldenberg, if you'd be able to check in on that specific property for me, and then if we could take a look at some of these other outstanding ones.
I will, Dr. Rothschild.
Thank you.
Yeah, when we're looking at that list, I mean, a lot of properties go in, I, I notice weekly, but they don't maybe show up on the list, or the list doesn't seem to be up to date. That was something I talked about a couple of caucuses ago, but not sure how they get onto this list, how they're processed through the list, but even some, the one that I've had several complaints about is the sixteen hundred Hawthorne Street. It also has, the magistrate has where, which is incorrect, but.
Okay, if there's no further comments on third order items, I received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
Just one, Weston Field, I believe the pool opened today, finally. The final repair was done to it. And now that it's open, I, I know the, the bathhouses and stuff down there are, I believe they're going to be demolished. I, I hope we, we don't move forward on any of that stuff until the end of the pool season. So if this pool does stay open for the rest of the summer, we don't close it because of any other reasons, that's all.
Frank, can you inquire with Scott, is it Frank Gassimeyer?
Scott Gassimeyer.
Parks and Rec to find out what's going on with that, with the bathhouses, and what the timeline is?
He advised me that it's with OECD at present, so I'll follow up with both.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a few announcements to make, if no one else has anything. So this weekend at NAOG, there will be a carnival for kids. That's going to be hosted by the Children's Advocacy Center. I think it's the first time, in the first year that they're doing it at that location, so that'll be exciting to have them there at NAOG. And so there'll be carnival food, treats, games, prizes, arts and crafts, pony rides, bounce houses, basically everything. That'll, that'll be great to keep kids entertained. So that's going to be taking place this Saturday from twelve to four PM at, at NAOG. And then the Friends of the Poor opened up a satellite food pantry, and that's going to be located at the Holy Rosary Center on West Market Street. And that will be taking place every third Thursday from two to three thirty PM, starting on July twentieth. And the following weekend, June twenty-ninth, that Saturday, there's going to be a big craft fair at NAOG, there's going to be a five K, there's going to be a lot of different events going on that day from nine AM to four PM. And that's going to be to help raise money for the Butterfly Playground. They've had that for a few years now, so that'll be taking place the following weekend. And then there will also be Saint Joseph's Center Festival that'll be at Marywood from Friday, the twenty-eighth to Sunday, the thirtieth, Friday and Saturday, it'll be from four to ten PM, and then that Sunday will be from twelve to seven PM. So a lot of good summer events and festivals going on.
Thank you. Mr. McAndrew?
No, I don't have anything, thank you.
Okay. I'll do that.
Yeah, so I do have one. I was told today that the North Scranton Hometown Heroes banners will be going up and installed as of this Wednesday and Thursday, and two hundred and twenty-seven banners throughout North Scranton will be hung for the hometown heroes. That's all, Mr. King.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Just a few things, we, it was happy earlier tonight during our caucus, we had our new auditing firm, CLA, which is Clifton, Lawson and Allen, come in and report to us, along with Matt Dominis and Eileen Cipriani, and it seems like they're off to a good start. We'll know for sure when the deadline hits for our audit. It sounds like they're pretty confident they're going to be able to deliver it on time, so that would be the first time in quite some time, so we're looking forward to that. Also, the hundred and seventeenth Waldorf Park German Day is scheduled for Sunday, August sixth, from one to six PM at Waldorf Park, and it's generally a good time, so we invite everybody to come up and attend that. Also, since we're gonna, we're gonna be off all of August, I just want to remind everyone, on Labor Day weekend, we have the huge Italian festival in downtown Scranton around the Courthouse Square, so we hope people can get out and enjoy that. I'll also announce that I will be participating next week, but I will be participating by phone, because I'll be away, but I will be here, be able to participate in the meeting. Thank you.
Fourth order, citizen participation.
Joan Hodawanitz, Scranton. Last week, you told me, gave me some information about why we don't have the delinquent property tax database on the city's website, some of the answers. But I, I don't know how, how much that satisfies me, since all those answers apply to the delinquent refuse database, which is on the city's website, which is only updated once every quarter, and which contains the names, addresses, and delinquent status of various citizens. So what's the difference between the refuse database and the property tax database? The same arguments should apply to both, so either no database should be on the website or both should be. That's my opinion. What is the status of the arbitration on the, the police union contract?
It's still status quo, they're, I think it's right down to the, the lawyers on both sides, so they're expecting it to be wrapped up shortly.
Uh-huh. Well, I'm sure Mr. Uffberg is happy, because in the month of June, he got paid forty-nine thousand dollars for his contribution. Also, in the June controllers' report, I see that Rainey and Rainey, the firm that was hired for two years, beginning in two thousand fifteen, to ensure that the audit would be done on time, got paid forty-four hundred dollars. God only knows what they're doing upstairs, but they're not getting the audit done on time, at least they haven't in the last seven years. And then, something strange and odd. When you see these resolutions reappointing or appointing someone to one of the authorities, you'll see a memo from, I think it's usually Brittany Hammer to Andrew Cotillo, Deputy City Solicitor. So it sounds to me like he's an employee. Yet in the controllers' report, under Law Department Professional Services, his name pops up, as it has in the past, for fifteen hundred dollars. So is he a paid employee, or what is this professional service he's being, he's providing? I can understand if it was training or a conference or something, but it's kind of odd, and it's not the first time his name has popped up. So see if you can find out why or what that professional service was, because he should be paid as a salary employee, and I don't understand what this is. Let's see. July seventeenth and eighteenth, Pennsylvania's declared Code Orange for air quality, and we still haven't heard from the city what their plan is should we ever dip down into a Code Red. Have you heard anything through the mayor about a code, plan for Code Red?
I have not recently, no.
Okay. Let's see. I was hoping that maybe our public health coordinator, Dr. Saxina, would, would have some input, but speaking of...
We were given something late this afternoon.
I'm sorry?
We were given something late this afternoon, so.
Okay, good. Item five I, the Community-Wide Health and Safety Landscape Assessment, which is being awarded to Muffelhun for sixty-nine thousand dollars. That's another public health issue that I would hope that she is involved in, since it's health and safety. And also in the newspaper recently, a story on the city's climate action plan for greenhouse gas reduction and reduction of heat islands in the city and related public health issues. These are all items that Dr. Saxina should be involved in, and I see no feedback to the citizens, not only on Code Red, but some of these other issues. It'd be nice to know what she's doing for that hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, and that the mayor wants to make a permanent position. And if you could, in fifth order, give us an update on the park, the park. I was very happy to see CLA come in and speak openly about their audit, and I will personally erect a statue to CLA if they get it in on September thirtieth or sooner. If they don't, ten percent penalty.
Thank you, Ms. Hodawanitz.
Hi, I'm Scott Thomas, CEO of the Scranton Public Library. I want to thank you for your help in getting the no parking sign moved by the Albright Library. Our people can now put books in our book drop, so we appreciate that, and also the authority appointments that are on the agenda. We also, I also want to voice our support for item six C, which is the Marion Street rerouting in one way. We, our Nancy K. Holmes branch is one block away from that intersection, and we've long been concerned about the safety there, and even got a petition together last year for that, so we're happy to see that that's being taken care of, so thank you for that. And I'm hoping that seven C will allow the green-to-go grant that the city got to upgrade the traffic signal and the crosswalks at the corner of Wyoming Avenue and Green Ridge Street, where our branch actually is, to get those upgraded. I know that's been around for a long time, so I'm hoping that that, that legislation will do that, so I just want to put that out there, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Evening, Council. Bob Bowles, Scranton. There are several things that I'd like to cover, and I'm going to give this to the council, What I've given you is something regarding the bathrooms in this facility. Since the very first public restroom were built, it's been standard practice to have one for females and one for males. For more than a century, everyone seemed pretty happy choosing between the women's room and the men's room. You know, gender-neutral bathrooms, as the only bathrooms in a company, are a very bad idea. They work for almost no one. Gender-neutral bathrooms alongside the standard male and female bathrooms are a good idea. They work for almost everyone. So what I'm saying is here in City Hall, if you want gender-neutral bathrooms, you have to put a separate one in, and leave it for men and women. That's our choice. The fact that many people find it extremely stressful to share a public bathroom space with people of the opposite sex, you're in there using a bathroom and women come in there, or vice versa, is very uncomfortable. What I gave you is a whole outline, Mr. King, regarding everything that it takes, the laws and everything related to a gender-neutral bathroom or a regular bathroom is what we need in the facility. Now, in this facility, on this floor, you have unisex bathrooms, yet on the third floor and the first floor, they're designated men and women, as they should be. There's urinals, everything as they should be, proper stalls, proper things. Yet on this floor, we don't have that, and that's a joke. Either you make them all the same, or you don't use them at all, one or the other. I don't want to go back. I've traveled all over the world, and I've been to third-world countries. If we don't like what we're doing here, put a hole in the ground, put a hole in the floor, we'll use them. That's where you're taking us backwards. We're not going forward, we're going backwards. A while back, Bill Gahan made some comments. Called me an ignorant fool. Name-calling can't be proved, it was here, because it related to Rothschild. Called me a weak-minded bully, disgusting, disgraceful comments, uneducated venom. This came from a council president who's in a federal lawsuit with me right now, because I take what people like that, who have contributed nothing, and they want to live off the system and make comments. I donated, as I told you, disinfectant wipes to child-hungry outreach here, a total of fifty thousand dollars worth, between Trump and myself. Yesterday, we donated five thousand dollars to the Friendship House of Disinfectant Wipes. I could ask Jessica here, could she, my physician's out of the country right now, could she write me a prescription for dicloamine? It's for heartburn. Could you do that, as a doctor?
I'm a doctor of physical therapy, so I don't write prescriptions.
That's correct. You're a physical therapist, and I've always requested...
I'm a first-time exercise.
Yeah, but you can't write a prescription, that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, but I earned a doctorate. It's a doctoral level degree.
I understand that, and I wanted to make it clear.
We've gone over this a lot of times, and I think it's really inappropriate to continue to bring it up. You, I think you made it clear, and I made it clear my point.
Okay, if we go back a little, Jessica had a passion for advocacy, began in Cozy when she founded her schools-first LGBTQ student organization. And what I want to bring that up, I'm a Catholic, the University of Scranton's a Catholic-Jewid school. The violation of the Catholic law is sex is a man and a woman. I'm requesting that the University of Scranton lose their tax exemption status, because they're not a Catholic university, and they violated the rule of law.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles.
Okay? And that's what I want to bring up here, and...
Ron Elman?
I understand, and...
Thank you, your time's up, sir.
If I could have one second more, or say something else, if it's not a problem. I want to talk about something about the pride or deep pleasure satisfaction which one reserves as the other, but men walking nude with an erection in a parade, with children and people around, is a total violation of law enforcement and decent exposure, yet they're never arrested.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles.
And it's time we all take a stand as who we are, because we're not all part of them, Mr. King.
Ron Elman, thank you.
And I'm sorry if it offends somebody here, but we do have that right.
It offends a lot of people, thank you.
Well, I got to finish my rolo up there anyway. Good evening, Council. First off, again, I realize there's little patriotism or devotion to our country presently due to the policies of this White House. Last week, some Biden bureaucrat ordered the needless, unnecessary destruction of a bald or American eagle. This is a standard, this is an emblem of our country. Right there behind you is one, on that, that pole. I, I am a real animal lover, and it's, a couple of years ago, I found a pigeon on the sidewalk. I ended up taking it to Stroudsburg, because I thought it was dying, and actually, there wasn't nothing wrong with it when I, when I got it there, but this destruction of a, a symbol of America, it's, it's no different than somebody grabbing that flag and shredding it in front of people. In my opinion, I guess, anyway. I realize there's plenty of people out there that have no feeling for the flag anymore. I, I can't imagine... Who gave somebody authority to destroy a beautiful animal like this? Some cretin in government or somebody is, it's just a contemptible vile act. And it, it doesn't seem like people care. I did see it on the news, but it looked like veterans group or somebody would have some comment on such a despicable occurrence. It's a, it's an example, it's an epitome example of the abuse of someone's power and, and authority in their position. I'm not attacking you, Mr. Smurl, in the least bit, but you never came to meetings, and the first act that you did was destroy the slide at the swimming pool that wasn't bothering, it wasn't any expense. I never, I'm not the only one. This was a needless waste of city property and money. Now it seems like it could have fit in eventually. I was told, I, I've only seen it from a distance, I was told there wasn't a thing in the world wrong with that slide by several people that I see at Western Park that knew about it. Well, I also saw the paper this week that the mayor and Ms. Lizzie declared Christmas in July for downtown. Seventy-five retail businesses and fifty cafes and restaurants and pubs and so on. See, another example, the whole city out there is hurting. Everything goes to downtown. Ms. Lizzie thinks that she, she declares these businesses are, need support, and Grove Brewery was given seventy thousand dollars a few months ago, and last week, they got over eighty-three thousand more. That doesn't seem like a small business in need of financial aid to me. There's little restaurants all over the city, there's small businesses that could use the financial help a lot better than they dwell it out, according to the paper last month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elman.
Good evening, Council. Lenny Schrebro. I'm a resident in, I'm a resident of Kaiser Valley, the flood-prone area. I'm wondering, did we get any information since the last week I was here for a couple of weeks ago?
Yeah, Mr. Schrebro, I did get a report. I think I announced this on last week, that regarding North Dewey Avenue and Lafayette Street, is that, are those the streets?
Yes.
Yeah. The City Public Works Director advised that DPW will place the drainage issue on their list and schedule as time and staffing permits. So it sounds like they're aware of it now, they have it on their list and expect to address it ASAP.
Okay. Those pictures are immediately around my house and around the neighborhood there. You'll see the drainage ditch. You know, see that reply that you just gave me? Sounds like the same thing that I heard for years, you know, but what's really going to get done about it? You know, it's, they're going to look at it. You know what, I noticed that flood control trucks come by, but they only come by after the storm is over, you know, and eventually, it does drain, you know, so they see, and I'm sure they put, put in their report that it's draining. But, you know, like, somebody should really come out there in the midst of the storm and, and it's unbelievable now that the drainage that comes down the streets, as you can see in the pictures, you know, like, now, it's like boulders come down, it's rocks, you know, it's not just dirt and debris. I don't know where they're coming from further up the line, but man, I'm telling you, it's unbelievable, the real debris that comes down. Now, you know, with this new council, since I've been coming here, jeez, I sure hope you guys do something more than the old council. That's all I could wish for. And in the past, you know, I rounded up the neighbors numerous times to come here and back up what I, what I say all the time, and that's been over 25 years, people have been coming here. And they say, Len, I don't want to bother anymore. They don't do nothing, and you're wasting your time going there. Well, about 10 years now, so far, the people are right. Now I understand why neighbors don't want to come out. Those storm drains that are up above me, you know, I don't, I don't really see them even doing anything, you know, because immediately when there's any, it doesn't have to be the storms like we've been getting, it could just be heavy rain, and, and they back up so quick, and then here we go, the whole neighborhood flood zone. Also, this drainage ditch that runs into that, that drainage, 36-inch drainage pipe, the foliage is grown so over from that ditch. You know, I, I'm hoping that somebody could, from the city, DPW could come and cut back some of that foliage, because it's, it's hanging over the road, about a quarter of the road, so now, any traffic going through there, they're driving on my lawn, you know, to avoid running into trees and everything else. Boy, these nasty storms that we just had recently, I just wish one of you guys would come out there and just see what it's like in person. You know, I really need to get a new truck. My old truck has given me all kinds of problems, but I was thinking, instead of getting a new truck, maybe I should get a boat. Thank you.
So, Mr. Schrebro? Mr. Schrebro, just so you know, I am one of your neighbors, I live in the Kaiser Valley, and several of these storms, I have been down and through by your house.
Okay.
I've seen the water come up, because it comes up out of the sewers in your area, and I think it's because they've been disconnected from the sewer lines? So there's, is there two separate lines around your home?
You know what, I don't know that for sure, but I'll tell you why, you know, one of the really bad storms we had a couple of years back, it was manure and poop and everything else that was mixed in with the flooding waters, you know, so I don't know exactly what's going on, you know, as far as different drainage. I don't, I just don't know that, but some of the neighbors were complaining about, you know, there's turds running down the street.
Yeah, I've seen it, it goes down a river, like, it goes right down Cameron Ave, like a river, almost out to Jackson Street.
That's right, yeah.
And then the roads behind it, the dirt, well, I don't know if it's a dirt road, but it seems to be a dirt road closer to Lackawanna baseball field, there's like a swamp in there when it happens. I do know DPW's working on some of the areas up there, and there were some studies that were done last summer, and I'm hoping to see some improvements in the area as well.
I'm going to get these pictures down to DPW as well-
Thank you.
And ask them to get up there.
All right. Really, I'm hoping somebody will do something, then what's been being done almost nothing in the last 10 years I've been coming here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schrebro. John Thomas?
John Thomas, Geneva House. Recently, I was visiting my friend Patty Anzantus, who lives on 1712 Dixon Avenue, and as you know, she's been here, here and there a few times. And that senior high-rise is almost halfway done. I was in her house, that house is literally shaking, and the men working on that senior high-rise. My, a man from the minor association said that this shouldn't be happening next to your home. He went down her cellar, it's starting to crack, and he says, the only thing I can tell you is check your cellar every day and consider moving. Another thing is, once, even some of the workers said, look, we're just doing our job, we don't think this is right. They actually told her that. There's a school up the hill on the left-hand side where she lives. They got school buses, you have teachers' cars. When that high-rise is built, you're going to have traffic jam like you wouldn't believe, and, and it's an accident waiting to be happened. And I don't know what to say.
Mr. Thomas, where is this?
1712 Dixon Avenue.
1712, Pittston Avenue?
Dixon Avenue.
Oh, Dixon Avenue, okay.
I thought she was here when this council was, maybe it was the last council, I don't know, but it's, it's, like I said, it's a disaster waiting to happen, and, you know, she's going to be, eventually, she's going to have to get out of there, but, you know, meanwhile, she has to, you know, she has to live there with her daughter. And like I said, I was there, visiting her on a few occasions, and the house literally shaking, I mean, you know. And, like I said, once it's done, because it's a narrow, you know, the street is, it's not a, it's a narrow street, you're going to have school buses, you're going to have teachers' cars, and people going in and out of the high-rise, and it's not going to be too pretty, it's just an accident waiting to be happened. I don't know if she was here, if you heard any of you members, Council, if she spoke to you about it, Dr. Rothschild.
Yeah, she's, she's been here before, her daughter has to speak about it, and their issues.
Yeah, and I know I might lie in saying this, but it was ordinance passed, that you can't build this high-rise next to a person's property. They, they started building the high-rise, a couple of weeks later, they changed the ordinance. If they, if they waited just before that high-rise started being built, that wouldn't be built, and, and I'm a little suspicious about that. And I don't want to mention any names because I don't want a lawsuit. Of course, they won't get any money if they sued me, but I, there's a couple of people, well-known people in this city, is involved in this high-rise, building this high-rise. And like I said, I can't prove it, and I can't mention any names, but it's all going to come out if an accident happens, and then it's going to be too late. On a lighter note, on the corner of Penn Avenue and Linden Street, as you know, there was a shoe store, it was, they tore that building down. Do you have any idea if anybody's going to, like, what's going to be built there, is there like any kind of interest there?
I don't know that at this time, but we can inquire, I'm not sure who actually owns that property. We can look into it.
It's only my opinion. I think it's great that we have a lot of young people in town, all that stuff, because I lived in town after 10 years. But there's one thing I don't like, because I live in town, we don't need any more banks, and we don't need any more hair salons. Thank you, Council, have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. That exhaust sign-in sheet, are there anyone else that'd like to speak, sir? Just ask you to please state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Eric. Person last name or just first name is okay?
First name is fine.
My name's Eric, I live at 1310 North Washington Avenue within the city.
Sure.
Permit parking's a very big issue over there, I'm here today to address that. First of all, it's ridiculous. There's, first of all, there's supposed to be a permit, from my understanding, from talking to the parking people who hand out the tickets, as well as the Scranton Police Department, who say they have no control over withdrawing tickets or anything to do with the tickets, they're, they're just basically enforcing it, from the sergeant that I spoke with at 3:00 today.
And where is this, Eric?
This is on the 1300 block of North Washington Avenue.
1300 North Washington, okay.
I have a pass that I purchased, and I've gotten a ticket today. So it's, it's ridiculous that we're getting, first of all, my mom has, owns the property, my brother lives upstairs, she lives downstairs, it's a, you know, double building. We should not be getting ticketed, we have passes, we have permits, we should not be able to, we shouldn't have to pay to park in front of our own house. The prison guards are in front of the prison, I took pictures before I came to this meeting. I'm trying to find out if only one side is permit parking, or if both sides of the 1300 block of North Washington Avenue are permit parking. I know my brother had reached out to somebody within City Hall here, they said if we petitioned enough people on the block, which mainly that block, I mean, you have three people who actually own their properties, the rest of the block is rental property. But we're trying to figure out why we keep getting ticketed, why we have to go to the magistrate to dispute it, when I know several prison guards who have gotten ticketed and they're, they didn't make it to the magistrate, it was dismissed before they went to the magistrate. I keep getting told, oh, just go to the magistrate, just go to the magistrate, the magistrate, as long as you got a ticket, the magistrate will dismiss it. Well, that's tying up the courts. Why do I want to tie up the courts? Why do I want to miss work to go to a court hearing to show that I have a pass and the magistrate's just going to dismiss it? That's, it's ridiculous.
So you're saying that the 1300 is permit parking, you have a permit, but you're getting ticketed?
Correct, all of our cars are getting ticketed, and it's ridiculous, it's really ridiculous that we have to-
So you're displaying your permit in your window and it's clearly-
Well, so, so, so today, it is my fault that I forgot to put the pass in the window and why I got a ticket, but we're not new to 1310 North Washington Avenue, apartment one or two. I have had the same car for four years, my mom's lived there for seven. Both Kelly, actually, I know her by name because her grandmother lives right next door to me, the one parking lady, and then you have the other man who I think actually used to work in licensing inspections and permits in this department, and just went over to the parking authority or part of it or whatever, but, I mean, we're not new to this, you know, to that area. You've seen my car there time and time again, you know I have a pass, you know I've bought in passes in the past, why do you keep ticketing us? You should be ticketing the guards, the prison guards, who, who don't reside in the city, who just work there as prison guards, you know, we shouldn't be getting ticketed as city tax-paying residents. First of all, we shouldn't even have to pay to park in front of our own house, but that's another matter. I'm just frustrated, my mom's frustrated. Right now, we have $100 in tickets, $25 every time we don't display or whatever in front of our house. It's ridiculous, it really is. I mean, I think everybody here in this room would probably agree that it's real shitty that, excuse my language, that you have to park, pay to park in front of your own home. It's crazy, very crazy.
I think probably the reason that it's permit parking, I'm sure the neighbors came and petitioned the city to make it permit parking, so it's kind of like a difficult situation where they wanted it, and now, you got a ticket and you didn't have the display in it, and-
But for the last seven years that we've lived there, it's been permit parking. I mean, I don't see any of the same, I see people moving in and out all the time in the city, you know what I mean? So therefore, nobody really has to say that.
Perhaps you can go to your neighbors and see if you can get a petition, see if we can get the permit.
And how do I start that process, sir?
Start knocking on doors and get a petition signed.
So I could type up something legally combined and I can get that, I can get everybody to sign it in the neighborhood?
Yeah, and you can present it to the city.
Okay, and then how about, just one more thing, the parking signs, I believe every sign, it's supposed to be a, no, or permit parking, every other pole, a sign is supposed to be on. There's no, the pole before Nicholas's Pizza has a sign that says no permit parking, but there's, everywhere else, there's, there's only two signs on that block total that say permit parking, so-
So I'm actually looking at your, on Google Maps right now, or Google Street View? There are permit parking on every other pole down that block, the length of that block has four poles, there's two permit parking on your side of the street, and there's also two on the opposite side.
So those signs are no longer there?
They're no longer there?
Yeah, and I have pictures of it on my telephone and my MacBook.
Because, yeah, the one is in front of the house directly next door to you, that sign is no longer there?
Yeah, there's no sign there, like, you could have the DPW guys come out, police come out, city, you guys could drive by.
From this on the computer, though, there are four signs on, within that block on both sides, and to answer your question previous was-
Yeah, and I've only counted for two.
Gotcha, but, yeah, both sides of the street are permit parking.
Okay, so, so that, yeah, there's no signs at all that say permit parking in front of the Lackawanna County Prison. Can I, can I actually show you guys real quick, or briefly, real quick?
I think, I think he has it up here, I'm looking at it right now.
There's one here.
Yep. There's no signs displaying that it's permit parking from the prison all the way down by the dirt parking lot that they get in.
So now, what street is this here?
This is 1300.
That's across from Andy Gavin's right there, right, in front of the older part of the prison. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so that's not North Washington, though. What street is that one?
This is North Washington, 1300 North Washington. This is in front of Lackawanna.
Heading toward the city, yeah. Okay, we'll inquire on number one with the signs, and number two, if, you know, you're no longer interested in having permit parking there, then typically, the citizens in those neighborhoods would sign a petition asking to have that permit parking.
How many people have to sign it, the whole block?
I don't know, it's good if you can get the vast majority of the people.
I plan on coming to see the mayor tomorrow, like, coming down to the mayor's office tomorrow, I spoke to a sergeant and everything, but-
Okay, you can do that as well, but I would encourage you to, they're going to tell you to get a petition.
Okay, but again, so you don't know how many people have to sign it, or like-
I don't know that answer, I would think the vast majority they would want, you know, if two people sign it and there's 15 people that live in the block, they're not likely going to change it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. King, we'll provide Eric with-
Mr. King, we'll provide Eric with a petition.
Okay.
We have his address.
Eric, Mr. Volenberg's going to actually give you a petition, so we'll get it to you.
We'll get your petition, sir, if you give us your address.
Okay. First, it's in North Washington Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coyne.
Tom Coyne, Manuka. I see tonight on motions B that we have the fire ordinance coming up again. The open burn. I understand last time this got voted down, and one of Dr. Rothschild's comments for it was, it kind of goes against the idea that protests are organic. I also have a question about that, because when a policy is defeated by this body, as far as I know, the next session, it can be brought up for a revote. Anything that is physically struck, voted down by this body, is not supposed to be reintroduced by the code, by the ordinance of the city until the next calendar year. It was defeated in this year. This shouldn't be before this body till next year. So someone who is really wanting this to go through really needs to slow the roll until January, because it's improper to push this through right now. In the last couple sessions ago, you had mentioned, Mr. King, you had mentioned there was a special session that was held. And you noted that the case number was 3. You paused, and then you said 202 CV 01172, and it was dealing with the open burn. When I went down and actually researched that, that docket number does not exist. So if you can get me the number, I would appreciate it, because that does not seem to be the correct docket number.
I'll have to double-check that number that I gave you. Sorry.
No problem. Pilot list. I asked for a list of pilots that have been sent out by the city, and have we got any response? Supposedly, there's been a list that the mayor's office has been aggressively putting out requests to the organizations for the pilot. Have we gotten a list back of who they've sent those pilots to? Those pilot request forms to?
Frank, do we receive anything?
We have not. I'll reach out.
If you would, thank you.
All right. Going on to the city health coordinator. I know she puts up links. I know that, or has the IT department put up links for people to look at. I know that she goes and takes stuff from federal sites, pamphlets, and has them posted for employees, because obviously those informational pamphlets from HUD or from the CDC can't be found anywhere else and need to be pulled by a $120,000 person to be put up on the website to say, look, I'm doing something. My question is, rather than going out to these mayor health meetings and talking about cigarette smoking, alcohol use, and NarCam, has she gone out and actually visited the homeless? Has she gone to the food shelters? Has she gone to soup kitchens? Has she actually gone out to the public who is impacted by health concerns? Not at a little fair, but actually gone to them where they live, St. Francis, and actually talked to the people down there who suffer in the cold in the winter and in the dust? Health coordinator is, should not be an office job. It should be out with the public as well. How are these homeless people going to get the webpages? How are they going to look up the information for when the code red is? As far as I know, the homeless down there don't have internet connections, and their trees that are next to their camps don't allow you to print out paper. I know it's wrong that the trees just aren't being technologically helpful, but these people are abandoned out there, and the healthcare coordinator is supposed to be doing that. And last, you keep saying, talking to the mayor. City council by the charter owns public health, not the mayor. Why does this body refuse to act on public health, which is its specific domain by the charter? Can you tell me, Mr. King?
I don't think there's anything in there that says that we can't work through the city to help make that happen.
No, it says yours is to legislate it, you own it, not work through, you own it.
Okay, well, one of the things that we did since we owned it, I don't think I was on council at the time, but they appointed a public health coordinator to help address that.
Why isn't she under this body rather than the mayor? Because health is this body, not the mayor's. Again, passing the buck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coyne.
Good evening, Virgil Argentza. Have we got the status on the Theodore Street Bridge by the city engineers? Does anybody know if they went out there and checked on that?
Frank, did we get an update on that?
First, it's being addressed by Norfolk Southern, as far as the railway bridge goes. They're going to report back to us, the regional bridge supervisor.
So our city inspectors didn't visit the bridge?
They're scheduled to visit the bridge.
It's a week now. My next question, the inventory list of the city-owned properties. I'm asking for those city-owned properties in that list, because Jessica continuously asks about properties. We need to know on these vacant lots, if they're owned by the city and if they're not. And if they're the city's property, we need to hold the city's feet to the fire. That's the reason why I want that list. That's my fourth week in a row that I've asked for the list. Also, an inventory list of city-owned vehicles. And if there are lists broken down by the apartments, and if so, may you provide a list of all police vehicles, including their year, make, mileage, and conditions of the vehicles? And do we have enough equipment afforded to the city police in the event of a crisis? Can you provide the staffing level in the police department? What's the number of officers needed in the police department to operate the city safely for the men and women in the department and for us, the citizens? How short-staffed is the police department? What is the plan of the city administration to bring it to a full staffing level? And if we are short, how are we covering up to make up for the shortages? Are we overworking these police officers? We know some of the things you see, you can't unsee. We have 10 new vehicles for code enforcement, and it's fair to say we have 10 employees for that department. So that's the reason why I'm asking about the police department and their vehicles. I think we have that a little bit backwards. The police department should have the new vehicles, and the police department should have the 10 new employees. And if there's police vehicles left over, we could give the police vehicles to code enforcement to use. Wrapping a police car, painting up a police car, doesn't make the police car any more efficient. Do we have a daily production log or a status report? Any of the calls and complaints that the code enforcement crew responds to? And how those 10 new cars and 10 new employees contributed to the city in a positive way? Are there any reports on any fines that they have collected? Is the 10 cars and 10 employees worth their weight in gold? Would it make sense maybe to piggyback from other departments and maybe help the police department get some vehicles that kind of work and are roadworthy? How about the status of the Sorento Center? Is there a chance that the public may be able to tour it? After all, us taxpayers are the investors of that city project. So the status of Weston Field, again, it's open. The building is ready to collapse. You have porta potties. Let me ask you something, Mr. Smurl, that's your gig. Is there any running water at the porta potties? Is there any running water at the pool area? Mr. Smurl, should there be running water?
Are you asking if there's running water at the porta potties?
Is that what you're asking?
Well, if you have the facilities there, and the changing rooms, and the bath areas, there's showers and running water. You put porta potties up.
Who did?
Is there running water? Is that a health problem? Is that an issue? You're in charge of that. You're the pool, you're the pool cheerleader. How is the pool? Is that safe, or did you just do this because it's the right thing to do? The building is ready to collapse. Would you sign off and be personally liable because you're part of that department if something happens when that building collapses? Are you liable and the city liable? Or is this just a big smoke and mirrors to open up a pool? We got three weeks left of summer before the kids go back to school. Are you ready for the liability? Bottom line, the question is, should there be water at the pool with the porta potties, with the changing rooms? Period. Is there running water? And if not, that's a health violation, and you know that as well as I do. The homeless are still running rampant. The guy that escaped from the prison on the murder was found in a homeless camp. We don't know who's in this city. It's not fair for our police officers to have to go down into a homeless camp and not know what they're up against. It's not fair for any one of us. When are you going to address the homeless issue? I've been here week after week after week after week. If it's the railroad's property, then get on the phone and get the railroad police down there. If it's the county's problem, get on the phone and get the county down there.
Thank you, Mr. Argentza.
We deserve better. And Rubicon, St. Anne's Novena is in town. Is the trash picked up at the St. Anne's area for the courtesy of the Novena?
Thank you, Mr. Argentza. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard?
Good evening, Marie Schumacher, city resident and taxpayer. First, I would like to say that I think you have done a great job, or whoever has taken, put Barbo Malley on the Neo Recreation Center. That's, I really think that's a good selection. Now, I'm confused. I thought that we did away with the business privilege and, yeah, and mercantile tax, and replaced it with a payroll preparation tax. Did we, or did we not?
Yes, but there's still some delinquents that they're trying to collect.
Well, did you...
I believe.
Did you look at, what is it, the 3? The one from the collection of the cities, I don't know, 5, 6? I don't know. Anyway, the... Okay, if I come back to it, I'll...
Under 3C, is that where you're referring?
No.
Okay.
Or 3C. Anyway, but that's what it's still... It's saying business privilege and mercantile tax. Okay, back to Meadow Brook 2. Do we have any more rights of way?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I ask if we have any more rights of way for the Meadow Brook 2.
No, I, we can ask for an update on that, on the Meadow Brook project, if you could, Frank.
I will, Mr. King.
Thank you.
Could there just be a place on the, on the computer where that's changed as it happens? Instead of coming here?
Update it with the easements? We can, see if we can ask the administration if that's a possibility.
It's handled through the legal department. I'll ask them.
Thanks.
Okay. On 7C, why aren't we waiting, what we, see what you're going to do with the walkability contracts? Are we going to redo them again if they're not, if they're not compliant with the walkability study?
Well, I think ultimately, the implementation of the walkability study is probably going to be a year, two, three years down the road. So in the meantime, I think we need, we have a responsibility to make sure we take care of, you know, the lights and the traffic signals until such time as decisions are actually made about what aspects of the walkability study are going to be implemented. Are all of them going to be implemented? So in the meantime, we have a responsibility to maintain them.
Okay. May I ask when we are going to be able to walk into this building up and right into the center's door? I mean, that, those stairs have been sectioned off for a very long time. It makes our city look like we're, I don't know what, but not good.
Frank, can we get an update on those front steps and find out where we're at with the repairs?
I'll get that information for you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, and another one on the the community health and safety landscape. What is a landscape within this regard, and how is the city going to use it?
Ms. Schumacher, I'm not sure. That company did a study for us in August of '22. I'd like to review that study to see what kind of information they have in that study before I would move forward voting on this, because I'm unsure what this, what this is going to do.
Yeah.
And it may seem that there has already been a study to do something very similar.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I'm concerned about that. But right now, I'm against it, certainly. Okay, well, I guess that'll be it for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schumacher. Dave Dobson?
Good evening, Council, Dave Dobson, resident, taxpayer. Taxes paid for this year, by the way. I have a little information on the rail bridge, if anybody cares to listen. In Bradford County, it's been reapplied for, the permit ran out. But they're building a gas to LPG plant. There will be 100-car trains carrying liquid petroleum gas. And each 12 cars are the equivalent of the Hiroshima bomb. So that would be at least eight Hiroshima bombs with a little energy left over. And by the way, just about all nuclear material gets carried by and large by rail because of its heavy weight. It's the heaviest metal in the world. So, that being said, hopefully the bridge will get fixed someday. And a comment was made about minimum wage. I have a little friend at the cashier's counter. She's 42 years old. And she got a whole 25 cents an hour raise this year. So now she makes $7.50 an hour. And I see a lot of the people that weighed on me at the grocery store walking to work. They're from my neighborhood, and I recognize them as employees of this store. Grooming. You know, there's the Moms for Liberty, and they want books banned. They don't want history to say anything that makes them feel uneasy. Science, math, it's a joke. They want, you know, the art is 6,500 years old, and Jesus's carriage was pulled by a baby dinosaur. And I went to a school like that. It was a parochial school. And my father became concerned about fractions. Well, I told him that the nuns spend about five minutes on compound fractions. And he went down to talk to Mother Superior. And a day or two later, an altar boy, older one, walked out on the playground, grabbed me by my William King hairstyle, and smashed me up the side of the head eight times, and told me, "We're sick and tired of you, Mr. Dobson." So, that being said, I'll despise that school till the day I die. Now, on General Dynamics Parks on Mathis Avenue, so much for a bypass. Traffic signals have authority. I wish they had 24-hour cameras so... I wish they had 24-hour cameras so if somebody tries to beat the light and knocks the hell out of my car, it's established that they're at fault. And by the way, extra time for pedestrians to cross, always stop. Developers, they're just a bunch of land grabs. The Radisson was the Hilton. It was sold after grants by, given to the Hilton. They were on Washington Avenue. They moved to their train station. They sold that, went to the corner, wound up owing us $5 million, insisted that the Casey Garage be torn down and a new one be built. And, you know, we're $50 million in the hole over the parking garages. And by the way, sidewalk cafes, I was walking past the Pangolbar, I think it was Italian Fest, and there was a tree in the way. I had to step in the gutter. Now, what would happen if somebody was on an electric wheelchair going up that street? So, there are issues here. And as far as I'm concerned, you could look for absolution somewhere else, look for approval somewhere else. You'll take the blame for the developer, bright idea.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard?
Hello, Council. I'm Rick Little. To quote a Mr. Beal in a major motion picture called Network from the '70s where he said, "I'm mad as hell and I'm not going to take this anymore." These are my sentiments tonight, especially when I, when I hear all these things that are supposed to happen, you know, these sprinkler parks that, you know, need feasibility studies and, you know, you have to look over to the health, welfare, and safety. I mean, why don't you just take a fire hydrant and drill holes in it and spray it out like they did on the Lower East Side until you get an official thing? If you're not going to build a pool, you tear down the whole pool, you know, why don't you make a lake there like Lincoln Lake or, you know, just get three dumpsters, weld them together, and, and make a temporary swimming pool? That'll make the official swimming pool go a lot faster because it goes on for years and years with bureaucracy. And frankly, the bureaucracy in Scranton is communism. It's, it's like top-down, it's who you know, everybody's related, oh, it's illegal, you know, we have to check this out with a judge and, and, you know, feasibility studies. What we need running the, this city and county and state and, and nation is builders, people who know how to build, people that look at a problem and say, "Yeah, you know, let's, you know, let's keep the kids out of the gorge, let's keep them from jumping into the roaring brook and dying, you know, let's weld three, three dumpsters together and this is the temporary swimming pool until the official one comes through." But we don't do that because we've, I've only got 2 minutes and 50 seconds left. I mean, this is like talk back, feedback with the government. We don't have, even have any public access television. When I first came here, I wanted public access television. "Oh, no, you said the word S-H-I-T on your thing, so that might offend people," so we can't. Now, the government owns all the media. This is it, you know? So, I'm mad that it, it just keeps going on, especially the homeless thing. I hear people talking about the homeless and this body is most responsible for it because you are the body that decides Scranton Housing Authority commissioners. And they've been the same commissioners for 28 years. And they, and it all comes down to what they're doing to the people in Scranton Housing Authority, which is, "Oh, you disobeyed your, your lease terms," you know? Well, does anybody look at the lease terms? Not Judge Farrell in the magistrate court, not Judge Moyle in, in Court of Common Peace Court, because they don't even know. They don't even know about the 1951 Landlord Tenet Act. We got homeless people, I go down there and talk to them. Yeah, they, they have SSI, but the weak, the weak link in the housing thing is the public housing. Because you got all these people, all these 501-3Cs, all these people that have a job, and I got a job, I work for the Department of, you know, Agency of Aging or Health and Human Services, and they're trying to sell you county housing. A person can't survive on county housing. So, what do they do? They, they, they go to court, they get evicted right away because that's a setup, you know, with the district attorney being the Scranton Housing Authority attorney and this judge that, you know, that he has right in their pocket. And it's thousands of people and they're homeless. There, there's, it's a shame on this city and it's been going on for decades and decades. And no one can get any information about, you know, who owns what. Oh, HUD, HUD owns Scranton Housing Authority? Well, you know, it's a complicated legal thing, but it's a complicated legal thing that, you know, a 70, 80-year-old person or a disabled person just can't figure it out. And you ain't going to figure it out going to Lackawanna pro bono because they're in on it too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Little. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Smearle, do you have any motions or comments?
I do, Mr. King. The first one, I guess Virgil was speaking about the buildings down at Weston Field. The city engineer did do a, an inspection on, on the building. So, I believe if they were deemed at that point structurally unsound, I believe the city would have immediately taken them down. Just because they look terrible doesn't mean they're going to fall over and kill somebody. But I, I know they're, they don't look well, but, you know, just to say they're, they're going to fall down, that's, that's really not going to happen. Or, you know, we would not have a city engineer. And the, the porta labs, the porta labs that they've, I guess they've placed down there, I haven't looked at them, but if the porta labs, all they require is a sanitation, a sanitary hand washing station there. And if that is placed with the porta labs, then you don't need running water. That is considered sanitary. They're at all of the, the community picnics and everything. You have hand washing station, that's, that's sufficient for the, the health to pass. So, I, I hope that helps with that. The other thing is the homeless situation. The Scranton Police Department has been dealing with this constantly. I spoke with Chief Carroll about it and I flat-out asked him, you know, "What are you guys doing about this?" And he explained to me how they, they do provide the homeless people with places that they can go to, they advise them of all of the health risks, especially with the smoke and stuff. But you just can't take somebody and say, "Okay, here's, here's a place that you should go," or force them to go. That's just not going to happen with these people. Unfortunately, most of these people have chosen to live outside. Some have mental health issues, some of them fear going to shelters that they would get beat up by their other people in there. They're not allowed to take their pets in, so they're not going to go. Or they can't take their personal shopping carts with their belongings in them, so they're not going to go. I also asked them about, I see a lot of them down there when I go by, I've never gotten out and spoke with them, but most have cell phones. A lot of them have tablets, a lot of them have, they all have ways of doing stuff. They, they have places they go to get their money. So, to think that we're going to just go down and move this camp, say, "I'll go down tomorrow and everybody pack up and leave." Well, guess what? They're going to be two miles down the street, we have the same situation. So, the police are dealing with this every day. They do go down there every day, they are there all the time. And stop and ask an officer when you see them going by. They do try to help these people all the time. This, this is through the entire country. This isn't just Scranton where the homeless people come. This is, I'm speaking right now, Virgil.
Mr. Agent, you continue to do this at these meetings? You were done speaking, you had your five minutes and there's no comments when we're speaking. You're out of order. I'm going to ask the officer to remove you if you continue to do this. You interrupt these meetings weekly. It's enough.
So, thank you, Mr. There are a lot of things that we can do and the city is providing the homeless people with as much as we can right now, but there are plans to, to do even more. But we just can't think we can go down and just, just push them around. They're human beings. We're not going to just take them and lock them up somewhere. That's just not going to happen. And they have the right to congregate underneath that trestle down there. They have the right to meet in small groups and they're not causing problems, they're not beating anybody up, and they're not setting fires. They're, they're people just like us. So, we, we have to do the right thing, treat them right, not just push them around and push them down the street. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smearle. Mr. Schuster?
The comments I have tonight, I guess, are going to be vehicle-related comments. I did ask about the new garbage trucks that we purchased. We purchased five garbage trucks that are smaller in size. So, last week, I asked, I stated I wasn't in favor of smaller trucks for trash pickup and I inquired if we're taking more trips to the landfill with the smaller trucks. And I asked DPW management if they were seeing more trips compared with the larger trucks in the fleet. The answer that I received was, "Please be advised that the administration is scheduled to speak with Rubicon about how garbage collection is going thus far." Mr. Voldenberg, I'm going to ask that you reach out to Chris Smith because I didn't ask, sorry to say this to you, but I didn't ask Rubicon how the trash pickup was going thus far. I'm asking Chris Smith how the trash pickup is going thus far and if we're seeing more trips to the dump with the smaller vehicles. That's my first vehicle comment.
Mr. Smearle, or, I'm sorry, Mr. Schuster? They did respond that the number of trips to the landfill is predicated by the amount of tonnage legally allowed per truck. All trucks 20 and 25 yards are making two dumps per visit, per shift to remain within the legal tonnage.
Okay. Next, we have a new fleet of electric vehicles. They've been traveling around the city for some time now. Can we please ask how these vehicles are going? Get a quick update, how the battery life is going? Does the battery sustain throughout the workday? How many times do they need to be charged? What kind of maintenance we're, we're incurring on these vehicles?
I'll ask those questions, sir.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Rothschild?
Yes, a couple things. I, that's one that reached out to me regarding 1620 to 1622 Pine Street, and that's an empty vacant lot. There was formerly a property on there owned by Ken Bond and that was demolished. And so, the neighbors have been working to maintain that lot and, and cut down the grass over the warmer months. And they were wondering if that's still the responsibility of Mr. Bond or if that's now on the responsibility of the city? So, if we could find out so that the neighbors don't have to be doing someone else's work.
I believe that would still be the responsibility of Mr. Bond. However, the city did place a lien on the property, but I'll ask for further information.
Okay, thank you. And I received a few responses on things. One of them was similar to the response that Councilman Schuster had received from DPW because I've been asking about the trash routes and there were some streets that were getting missed. And they also said that, you know, they're, they're speaking to Rubicon about the, the garbage collection, but that if, if your garbage is missed or if you encounter those issues, to notify 311 directly and immediately with, with those issues so that someone could get out to, to take care of them. So, they provided the email, scranton311@scrattonpa.gov and also City Call's phone number, 570-348-4100. I did also have another street to add to that list that hasn't been picked up yet, to my knowledge. That was the 600 block of Duncan Street. So, if you could inquire about that, Mr. Voldenberg?
I will, Dr. Rothschild.
Thank you. And with regards to the question about code red and the air quality response, we had received one from Dr. Saxana and what she had stated was that she has been providing public health information updates using social media with regards to the Canadian wildfires and had provided some additional information on air quality index ranges and the definition of, you know, safety for orange versus red and the other additional resources as well to find out about air quality like airnow.gov. And there was a chart included. The city's also installing hydration stations to address extreme heat, so I was happy to hear that. And the city of Scranton does just have the code blue for those experiencing homelessness. The wildfires are relatively new issue to address, but they're understanding that there are two drop-in shelters within the city of Scranton for displaced persons. And those include the Community Intervention Center at 445 North Sixth Avenue in Scranton and the Keystone Mission on 8 West Olive Street. So, that's information that we received with regards to our air quality response. And also, another response with regards to the Public Health Coordinator. I do know that she's held numerous community health events and those have been at like low-income, low-income housing buildings and units. So, I feel like that is something helpful towards the, the community. I don't know with regards to if she's visited those homeless shelters or homeless camps, but we could certainly ask about that.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Mr. McCandrew?
Yeah, I have a few things. Thank you. First up, on the corner of Wheeler and East Gibson, there's two stop signs that are worn. They're very hard to see, especially for people that probably don't live around here, so they need to be replaced, okay? And then, this is probably the third ask now. I'd be asked of our parks, our new parks director, if he got certified. He promised within two weeks, he's here two months. I know you reached out to him multiple times. Did he respond again, did he finally respond today?
Not as of today, sir.
Could you please send another email or correspondence?
I'll reach out.
All right. It was a simple ask and he promised he'd do it, so I don't know what the problem is. And then, residents reached out to me from the Oakwood Neighborhood Association and they're asking for a status on their park, which is next on the list, told to them by the city engineer. This park was demoed a few years back and they are waiting three years for this new park. Their concern is that the summer is almost over and would like to know when they'll be starting this park project up there. So, Mr. Voldenberg, would you please contact the city engineer, parks director, city administration for an update, please?
I will, Mr. McCandrew.
And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCandrew. I have some follow-ups from previous, the previous meeting from last week. Joan Hodoanit's had questions about the PPT collections update. Total 2022 collections PPT with penalty and interest is $2,248,000. City's target for four full quarters for PPT collection was 2.4 million. So, when 2022 delinquent collections actively being pursued by Burckheimer, the 2.4 million target is very achievable. Most of the 2023 received and unposted of $149,470.28. Will be posted in the first quarter 2023 PPT, adding this to the posted $231,119.96. We'll put the city's approximately $380,590 for the first quarter of PPT collections. It's a big improvement over the first quarter from 2022 collections. City continues to work with Burckheimer to increase the current. City continues to work with Burckheimer to increase the current quarterly submission of PPT tax returns by businesses. Mr. Argenta inquired about Norfolk Southern Railroad Bridge. We're notified Norfolk Southern Bridge Management of the reported condition of the railway bridges on Theodore Street, North Main Avenue, Luzerne Street. Michael Whitley, the Norfolk Southern Bridge Supervisor, will inspect and advise. Norma Jeffries, Danielle Dole on the ABM Parking to advise on the following question she had. Do the downtown kiosk shut down to payment for parking after 5:00 p.m.? Is there monitoring in place for ABM to respond to non-working kiosks? Or does ABM respond on customer notification of non-working kiosks only? Scott Petrofis, DPW Director, will advise status of street sign project. 524 Gibson Street, our city councils received a number of complaints from neighbors regarding the overgrown, dilapidated property of 524 Gibson Street. Our council office is following up with code enforcement, OECD, regarding citation and condemnation of this property. With respect to the intergovernmental agreement of cooperation with the city and the Scranton School District, there were some questions. Why is the full salary noted in the 2023 budget for OECD? The city will pay the salary. The school district will reimburse 50%. What's the hiring process for the position? The position is publicly advertised. There's a joint hiring committee between the school district and the city. Where will a person, where will the person work from, the city or school district? Employee will split time between the school district office and City Hall. Will the employee benefits from the city or school district? Where will they come from? The city is responsible for the benefits and costs reimbursed by the Scranton School District. Which union would this position fall under? This is not a union position. Is the person currently working? No. Okay. All right. Also, this is from our Controller, John Murray. In viewing the last few city council meetings, I heard Mr. Ron Elman bringing up the issue of his increased homeowner's insurance and him wondering if this has to do with the impending property tax reassessment being conducted by Lackawanna County. It does not. The Controller indicates that his personal homeowner's policy increased by almost 17%. He inquired with his insurance company agent and was told these increases have nothing to do with reassessment. As a matter of fact, they don't have much to do with an appraised value of a home. They have everything to do with rebuilding the home if there was a total loss was incurred. From what he was told, the rising cost of labor and goods has everything to do with the increased homeowner insurance rates. Should Mr. Elman, so he wanted me to mention this if he had brought it up again, so I was just responding to that. And that's all I have.
5B, for introduction and ordinance, amending the city's open burn prohibition to explicitly allow an exception for public demonstration under certain conditions.
At this time, I'd like to waive the rules and reintroduce this. At this time, entertain a motion that 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
Second.
On the question. So, first, we're going to vote on waiving the rules. All those in favor?
I don't know.
Because we're reintroducing it after it was voted down. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved. So, at this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So, moved.
On the question.
It's a second.
I'm, sorry, go ahead.
Second.
On the question, I really didn't get too much of a sufficient answer from the city on this. Some of the concerns I had, they didn't really seem to address. I know there's some other things going on with it, but they didn't really provide me with a sufficient answer for my vote on this.
I think it's important to note that this piece of legislation is being reintroduced since council received additional information from the Law Department. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C, for introduction and resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Pensy Supply, Inc., to provide paving services for the city of Scranton for the fall of 2023 through the spring of 2024.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So, moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5D, for introduction and resolution, reappointment of Reverend Rebecca Barnes, Scranton, Pennsylvania, as a member of the Scranton Human Relations Commission. Reverend Barnes' five-year term will begin August 25, 2023, and will expire August 31, 2028.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So, moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5E, for introduction and resolution, reappointment of Karen Bizarri, Scranton, Pennsylvania, as a member of the Scranton Library Authority. Karen Bizarri's four-year term will begin July 31, 2023, and will expire July 31, 2027.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So, moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5F, for introduction and resolution, reappointment of Barbara O'Malley, Scranton, Pennsylvania, as a member of the Scranton Municipal Recreation Authority. Barbara O'Malley's five-year term will begin August 23, 2023, and will expire August 31, 2028.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So, moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5G, for introduction and resolution, reappointment of Ann Salerno, Scranton, Pennsylvania, as a member of the Scranton Library Authority. Ann Salerno's four-year term will begin July 31, 2023, and will expire July 31, 2027.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
So, moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5H, for introduction and resolution, reappointment of Ajay Wentham, Scranton, Pennsylvania, as a member of the Scranton Human Relations Commission. Ajay Wentham's five-year term will begin August 25, 2023, and will expire August 31, 2028.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5H be introduced into its proper committee.
So, moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5I, for introduction and resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Muffel Hun to perform community health and safety landscape analysis for the city of Scranton.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5I be introduced into its proper committee.
So, moved.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, I did mention it in caucus. For this study, $100,000 of ARPA money was put out. The bid was for $67,374. This money, there was $500,000 put aside for behavioral health projects. This year, I would say, does not technically fall into behavioral health projects, but I did notice that this company did a study that was presented to the city in August of 2022. They developed an initial assessment report that was given to the city, and I'd requested Frank if he could reach out to the administration. I sent an email earlier to Ms. Cipriani as well as Chief Carroll to get a copy of this study. I'd like to take a look at this study before I give my approval in Seventh Order to see what kind of findings they had. It was done through a grant for $748,250 through, I think, DHS at the time, so it might be some information that we already have. I will move it forward, but we'll reserve my vote in final passage.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5J, for introduction and resolution, authorizing the Director of the Department of Public Works of the city of Scranton to sign and submit the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation application for traffic signal approval for traffic signal at Cherry Street and Shimf Court, associated with Scranton Counseling Center, to further improve the safety of pedestrian crossing.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5J be introduced into its proper committee.
So, moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file of council number 76, 2023, in ordinance, establishing a no-right turn from North Main Avenue to Pond Avenue. No left turns for trucks from Pond Avenue to North Main Avenue. Separate the intersection of Pond Avenue and Dean Street via line striping to improve traffic operations and safety.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6A pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
6B, reading by title, file of council number 77, 2023, in ordinance, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an intergovernmental agreement of cooperation by and between the city of Scranton and the Scranton School District for the creation and employment of the shared community development coordinator position.
You've heard reading by title of item 6B. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6B pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify.
We didn't get all our answers to that, to the questions pertinent to this position. I asked where the pension's going to come from. Do we know if they're going to be enrolled in the state pension or the city pension?
I think I just read, I don't know.
No, they're sharing, they're being reimbursed for benefits.
Oh, okay, yeah.
At the pension.
There's no union, so.
You can still have a pension.
Right, right, right.
If you're working for the district.
Yeah, okay. Let's see if we can get that.
I'd want to know if I was the employee. I asked that last week, so I'll swing around and see if you can get the answer.
And they indicated it's not a union position, but I'll check on, I'll check further.
No, no, you don't have to be a union position to be in the state pension plan or the city's pension plan. I just want to know which one this person would fall under.
I'll ask those questions. See if we can get an answer for that.
I will.
Thank you, Frank. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
6C, reading by title, file of council number 78, 2023, in ordinance, revising traffic patterns on Marion Street to one-way traffic westbound from Wyoming Avenue to Penn Avenue. Revising traffic patterns on Marion Street to one-way traffic eastbound from Wyoming Avenue to North Washington Avenue. Restricting eastbound Marion Street traffic approaching North Washington Avenue to right turns only. And restricting westbound Marion Street traffic approaching North Washington Avenue to right turns only for vehicular and pedestrian safety.
You've heard reading by title of item 6C. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6C pass reading by pleasure, or reading by title.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
6D, reading by title, file of council number 79, 2023, in ordinance, ratifying the execution of time-sensitive temporary construction easement agreements between affected city of Scranton property owners and the city of Scranton to complete the Federal Emergency Management Agency projects in accordance with FEMA debris removal construction plans, which are to be completed by the deadline of December 31, 2023.
You've heard reading by title of item 6D. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6D pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, with this resolution or with this ordinance, I'm going to be a stickler. In the backup information, there is a memo. It's titled Exhibit A. This Exhibit A is a memo from Jessica Esker dated June 13, and in the resolution, it states that council received this memo on June 13 or on and around June 13. Council never received this, never received this memo. I would like to make an amendment to, let's take a look at this paragraph here. I guess I'd like to make an amendment to change paragraph three to state, we received the memo on or about June 18, 2023.
You mean July 18.
Oh, July 18.
Right.
2023, correct.
So, there's been a proposed amendment to change the language from June 13 to July 18, as to when the memo was received, correct?
Correct. And if you'd also like me to amend the backup documentation, and the backup documentation that also refers in the legislation description that a memorandum was sent to city council on or about June 13, and I would like to also change that date.
Okay, so there's a motion to amend both the resolution and the backup documentation indicate that the memo was received on July 18 and not June 13.
Correct.
Do we have a second?
Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it, and so moved. We'll go back to the motion. So, that's actually, we just approved with the amendment.
Correct. So, with that being said, this emergency situation goes back to 2018. It's been quite some time since the city has taken action on some of these projects. They did get an extension out to June of this year, or out to December 31 of this year to get these projects completed. I mean, the timing here coincides right with our break. I would have liked to have seen it at a different point in time, but I don't want to see these property owners suffering with what they've already had to deal with, so I will pass this into Seventh Order.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 267, 2023, appointment of Robert Shoemaker, Scranton, Pennsylvania, as a member of the Environmental Advisory Council for a term of three years. Robert Shoemaker's term is effective upon execution of the resolution and will expire on July 31, 2026.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schmroll?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adoptive.
7B, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 268, 2023, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Barry Isid and Associates to perform a three-year engineering service for an infrastructure project.
What is the recommendation of chairperson of the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schmroll?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adoptive.
7C, for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption, Resolution Number 269, 2023, authorizing the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation to upgrade certain traffic control devices in the city of Scranton and to make all necessary applications for such on behalf of the city of Scranton.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson of the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schmroll?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adoptive.
7D, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 270, 2023, appointment of Michael Diantona, Scranton, Pennsylvania, as a member of the zoning hearing board for a term of three years. Mr. Diantona will replace Robert Gowan Collins, whose term expired on July 1, 2023. Mr. Diantona's term is effective upon execution of this resolution and will expire on July 1, 2026.
What is the recommendation, chairperson of the Committee on Public Works?
Thank you.
Excuse me. Excuse me. As Chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, I just wanted to thank Mr. Gowan Collins for his work on the zoning board, as well as welcoming Mr. Diantona.
I'd like to thank him as well. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smell?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adoptive.
7E, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 271, 2023, reappointment of Sean Walsh, Scranton, Pennsylvania, as a member of the zoning hearing board for an additional term of three years. Mr. Walsh's term expired on July 1, 2023, and his new term will expire on July 1, 2026.
As Chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7E.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smell?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7E legally and lawfully adoptive.
7F, for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption, Resolution Number 272, 2023, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with BKP Architects, PC, to perform Naog Pool Complex feasibility study, update, and pool complex construction design.
What's the recommendation, the Chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As Chairperson for Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7F.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, when we look at this, there's two phases to this project. There's the feasibility piece for $25,000, and there's the design piece for $332,821. I am glad that this resolution does include both of those phases. When looking at that old study, it does need to be updated and reviewed. From looking at some of the newer prices, it does seem to be similar in price at this point in time. One thing that I want to point out, though, is it does seem to be, normally contracts like this are a percentage of what the cost of the project is going to be. It appears that this has been costed out at probably 4.5% of $8 million. I don't know why we're still shooting at that $8 million mark when, you know, I do think the pool is going to be, or this complex may be a little bit bigger than McDade. However, I think we could do it for less money than $8 million. I would have liked to have seen this come in with the company deciding what the cost would be rather than giving them the cost upfront. But I hope for the best here with Naog, and I'd like to see a swim complex up there. That's all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Smell?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7F legally and lawfully adoptive.
7G, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 273, 2023, appointment of Joseph Hollins, Scranton, Pennsylvania, as a member of the Environmental Advisory Council for a term of three years. Joseph Hollins' term is effective upon execution of the resolution and will expire on July 31, 2026.
As Chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7G.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smell?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7G legally and lawfully adoptive.
Eighth order, 8A, file to Council Number 62, 2023.
This is an ordinance, this ordinance is the HUD 2023 Annual Action Plan. It's been tabled for 30 days to allow for public comment. It will be taken from the table and placed in Seventh Order for final vote next week.